Okay, let's call today's Board of Trustees meeting to order at four P M. Before we call the roll, I will apologize for my voice. I do have some seasonal allergies, so my apologies. Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Belkowsky.
Present.
McTomey. Nunley.
Here.
Pismo.
Present.
Sheets.
Here.
Stanger.
Here.
Swanson. Zibble.
Here. Okay, thank you, everyone. If we could please stand for the pledge.
Flag moved.
By allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic where wishes stands, one nation under God. In this world with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Zibble, would you be as kind to read our mission statement, please?
Certainly. Lake Tran is committed to providing quality public transportation services to all Lake County residents with special emphasis on the meeting. On meeting the transportation needs of seniors and people with disabilities.
Thank you very much. Are there any public comments in the room today? Okay, seeing none. Let's move on to the approval of minutes. At this time, is there a motion to approve the Lake Tran Board of Trustees Board Meeting Minutes of March twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-three?
So moved.
Motion made by Miss Pismo. Is there a second? Seconded by Miss Nunley. Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Epic.
Epstein.
McTomey. Nunley.
Yes.
Pismo.
Abstain.
Sheets.
Yes.
Stanger.
Yes.
Zibble.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. I am going to ask Mr. Dines a question before I read the next item. Mr. Dines, how can the board approve the minutes for the special meeting if a lot of members were not present? You just abstain?
It could abstain, and if they've read the minutes, even though it's a special name, the board members could still vote to approve it if in that favor.
Thanks, Ben. Yeah, they could either abstain, or if the board members who were not present had at least read them, they can still offer an affirmative vote as far as the minutes go, as long as they've read them in their entirety.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. At this time, is there a motion to approve the Lake Tran Board of Trustees Special Meeting Minutes of April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three? Motion made by Miss McTomey. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Miss Stanger. Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Yes.
McTomey. Nunley.
Abstain.
Pismo.
Abstain.
Sheets. Stanger.
Yes.
Zibble.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. For our next item, we have two presentations that are going to be on the agenda. I'm going to turn the meeting over to Ben to lead for those two items.
Sure. So with us tonight, we have Tech Engineering, Inc. and V L Chapman. Both of them won awards recently as part of a project they worked on with us. So they asked if they could come tonight and just share the award and how they received it. So we have Tech up first. If any of our gentlemen from Tech would like to come up to the podium and kind of give us a run through. Also have some slides, and I think V L Chapman has a video, so we'll have some multimedia things to look at.
Good afternoon. I'm Terry Kilborn, CEO of Tech Incorporated Engineering and Design. And I can't tell you how thrilled we are to be here to be able to present the award to the Lake Tran. Along with me are Tim Poole and Adam Kilborn. Tim is the Executive Vice President and President. And Tim is going to be taking over and explaining what the award is and all the effort he put in for us to be able to win this on behalf of both our office and Lake Tran Agency. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Terry. On behalf of Tech, Inc., I'm here to present the A C E C Ohio Honor Award to Lake Tran for the Frank Polifka and Wickliffe Park and Ride Transit Centers. A E C stands for the American Council of Engineering Companies and is the oldest and largest business association of engineering companies, which was founded in nineteen oh five. It is organized as a federation of fifty-two state and regional councils with national headquarters in Washington, D.C. comprising thousands of engineering practices throughout the country. The jurors who reviewed the Ohio application that we prepared consisted of past ODOT directors, director, district deputy directors, and county engineers, among others that have served the organization for many years. The criteria for selection of the award are summarized in five key items. The project's uniqueness and the innovative applications of newer existing technologies. The potential future value to enhance public awareness and enthusiasm. The social, economic, and sustainable developmental considerations of the project. The complexity and unique problem solving of the project objectives and the successful fulfillment of the public's needs. That was an overall project success, and did it have an impact economically and responsibly to the public as a solution? All of these items were contained in those projects. And I'm very pleased to inform Lake Tran Board that we were selected for the A C E C Ohio Honor Award over forty-eight other submissions. And I hereby officially present this award to Lake Tran. On behalf of Tech, Inc., I further want to congratulate the Lake Tran Board on their vision and their commitment to sustainable energy resources and to a zero emissions bus fleet. I want to personally thank the board for the opportunity to have Tech as part of your engineering team on these projects and for allowing us to submit this for this award. It's a great honor. I want to reinforce our commitment to partnering with you and Lake Tran on future engineering opportunities. Thank you very much.
Adam? On display here. Like I'm on a TV show right now.
And Tim, we have your slides if you want to, if you want to.
Sure, I mean.
Absolutely, thank you. Do I have a, can you advance the slide?
Yeah, just tell me when.
So the pantograph charger you see on the installation there was in the, was in the canopy of the transit center, and it was the first installation of its kind from a ground base such as a, the foundation that the canopy made. They usually go on pantographs, which are individual freestanding, like you see at the Wickliffe Park and Ride. So a lot of innovation went into this. Chapman was a big part of getting the wiring through that existing structure and into that connection box, which, which was, you know, very tight quarters. The entrance you see at the, at the Community College, La Lakeland Community College with the canopy bounded A B B fast charging bus chargers. They provide over one hundred weekly departures. Next slide. We had to install large cable. These, these pantograph chargers were not just twenty-four volt little jumper cables. The cabling was about a half of an inch in diameter, and it was, was two thousand, actually two thousand volt rated DC cable that ran through the structure to the control module where the power was interconnected and combined during construction. Again, no, no other facility in the world has this as the connection point of a bus. So it was very closely coordinated. The electrical contractor Chapman did a great job running it up through the canopy and through the structure. The Wickliffe Transit Centers, although more conventional to the pantograph charger in that it was a freestanding structure, we put two pantograph structures in there with the electric buses to be able to charge two buses at a time. And that gets enough power in the buses to get from the Lake Tran to the Wickliffe Park and Ride and continue the route. Part of the other thing that we did was that since the pantographs had a lot of heat that they give off during the charging process, we needed to put in an emergency exhaust system, just in case, because of the investment in the technology and the systems in that room. We do have air conditioning for that room, but as a safety measure, we also put in an emergency exhaust system to fully exhaust the room should something happen to the air conditioner. And then we also added lighting for additional safety and security. And the tower is very significant. If you, if you drive on Route Two and you take a look at the south side of Route Two, you see a definite prominent structure there that has Lake Tran at the top that really, I think, memento, there's a memento of what was done at that center. There's great being able to visually see it from the road and definitely alerts passengers to what is going on over there. And I've heard multiple stories about, from, from people, both in the community and the public, about what exactly is going on there. Because it's a, it's a, it's a real eye-catching facility. Okay, thank you very much.
You want me to carry it right on?
Keep going.
Oh, sure, do it.
Four?
Absolutely.
And it asked me about running these projects, and of course, I said yes. Any, any new challenge, I definitely open, openly accept it. This was something different. It it had, it had new aspects to it and being that it's, it's, it's the way of the future.
You know, when you select a project like this with a new technology, it's really important that you have a vendor partnership that is just as excited about that project as you are. And we have worked with V L Chapman since nineteen seventy-four. And in that entire time, we have received incredible customer service and an excitement for anything new. And so it was a natural fit that we brought this technology to Lake County and then counted on V L Chapman to install it and then also maintain it. So it's not just about putting in this, this fancy product behind me. It's about how do you support it long term? You know, for us transit folks, you know, this bus is federally required to last twelve years. That means I have to make sure it runs, operates, and charges for twelve years. So having a partner that we can count on like V L Chapman is part of why this project has been successful and will be successful into the future.
Since I was a kid, my dad, my uncle Jim, been partnering with Lake Tran on a number of different projects. And for us to get to do this for them and then be awarded the maintenance contract as well, really a fantastic opportunity for a small shop like ours to be able to be part of this new technology that's going to be spread out to transit authorities across the country. We've got a great team of twenty-five I B W electricians that I just cannot say enough about our team and how they perform. Everyone did a fantastic job, safety, getting feedback to the manufacturers about best practices. The whole project has been fantastic.
I've been fortunate enough to be around since my brother and I started with Lake Tran back in nineteen seventy-four. Frank Polifka was the general manager at that time. And this was long before they had electric vehicles with zero admission. We actually, about a mile and a half from here at the original Lake Tran site over on Olive Street, my brother Jim and I wired that for, for Lake Tran. And we have been involved in every major project that Lake Tran has had since then.
It was a privilege learning and working alongside Lake Tran, A B B, and New Flyer as we tried to help introduce this emerging electrical charging market to the transit industry.
But these guys looked into the future, and they could see the future of transportation. And this type of vehicle has now become a reality. So we're really proud of the relationship that we have had with Lake Tran for all these years, probably forty-eight years, whenever they were first inception of Lake Tran. So things have gone well. They have been a great customer. And we have tried our best to provide the best service to them than we could. So it's been a wonderful relationship.
I want to thank each of you. I want to thank Ben and Julia for the opportunity to come and say thank you to you today. That's really why I'm here, just to say thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to serve your organization, to work with Tech. On this project specifically has been a real privilege for, again, a small shop like ours to be able to submit exactly what you see there and kind of that in writing. We submitted that video about our project and then the details of the project, your project that we were able to bid and to perform. We were awarded the, from all across the United States, we were awarded the Project Excellence Award for all union electrical work in the electrical vehicle category last year in two thousand and twenty-two. So that's for all construction that happened in the United States last year. They chose your project as the most excellent electrical vehicle award in the country. And again, that's not really about us. We didn't design the project. We didn't fund the project. We simply executed your project the way Tech designed it. And it was a great opportunity for us because we have a great customer like you. So on behalf of my family and on behalf of our, our electricians, our I B W electricians, we just wanted to say thank you. And I think these two awards for you as a board, I think they really shine light on how significant your leadership is in the transit community here in Ohio and in the country. And for us, it's just a great opportunity to serve your organization. So that's my message to you today is thank you. Thank you so much.
No, and I would just, you know, for, for the board, you know, Tech and, and V L Chapman have been long-term partners of ours that have always supported us really well with excellent products and pricing. And so we really appreciate having partners to lean on for all this stuff so that, you know, we can, we don't have to hire people to do it. We can rely on our excellent outside partners to get it done for us at a, at a good, good price for the taxpayer. So just thanks to them, too.
Right. Thank you, Ben. And thank you to Tech and V L Chapman. We do appreciate everything, and thank you for making time to come here today. Thank you very much. It looks like our next item on the agenda is there going to be a motion to enter into executive session to prepare for negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment pursuant to section one twenty-one point twenty-two G four of the Ohio Revised Code.
So moved.
Motion made by Miss Pismo. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Miss Stanger. Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Epic.
Yes.
McTomey. Nunley.
Yes.
Pismo.
Yes.
Sheets.
Yes.
Stanger.
Yes.
Zibble.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We will be going into executive session at four seventeen P M. And the board would like to invite our CEO and our legal counsel in this executive. This time, I'll turn the meeting over to Lisa for our February twenty twenty-three financials.
So nothing significant is standing out for February of this year compared to prior year in our budget. We're kind of like right in the middle. If we look at our revenues, we're at almost five point four million. Our operating expenses are almost three point four million, so we have about a two million income loss before depreciation. If we can turn to the next page. Just to kind of break it out, and I know I've said this before, but I want to show, because the numbers are showing it on our revenue piece. In twenty-two was the last year we got our grant money for the pandemic, so you can obviously see that here under federal and state. Through February, we're at almost one point nine million in two thousand and twenty-two. We're at about seven hundred and sixty-three thousand and twenty-three versus our budget of six hundred and seventy thousand. Comparing the expenses, we're kind of like right in the middle between what we budgeted and what we spent in two thousand and twenty-two. We're at three point three, almost say three million, three hundred and fifty thousand. We are obviously spending a little bit less than what we had budgeted, and we have a tiny bit more revenue than what we had projected. But I would say all is well and on track. I do just wanted to highlight something since we brought up about the electric today under the utilities and insurance. So when we switch to the electric buses, based on our coding and how we have to do our numbers for N T D, the electric obviously shows up under utilities versus the fuel, which shows up under supplies. So that would give a little bit of an explanation on why in two thousand and twenty-two, our utilities and insurance is up compared when you're looking at two thousand and twenty-two. Just to put a little perspective on that. And if we can move to the next, okay, so I, I, I didn't know exactly how you guys wanted this. I know Ben had said that he had gotten something, but I had already prepared this, so I think it was after the fact. But we can still change this. This is just to kind of do the opposite of what was suggested last month to kind of give you a little bit of an idea of more on what the cash balance is minus commitments. Not sure if you want it broken out as much, but Ben and I will talk about that, and I'll fix it for next time.
Yeah, this is just an update based on the comments from the board last month. We still have some tweaks to do to make it a little bit more clear. But the objective was at the bottom to see the cash balance that has no commitments against it. So unencumbered, whatever term you'd like to use. We're going to simplify it a little bit and kind of break it out, especially once we have Geogre break it out by entity. But this, the objective again was, you know, what cash do we have that doesn't have something, somewhere committed against it? And that's what that bottom number is. The capital commitments for the three-year period, twenty-four to twenty-seven, is just under three million dollars? As of right now.
That's our local. That's our.
Oh, yeah, that's just local cash. So that's twenty percent. Okay.
Yeah.
And I thought we had, I thought we usually had more of a commitment than a million dollars a year for that.
Well, on these grants, I think what's going forward in the, Andrea could probably speak more. A lot of it's the buses. Because we've actually applied for grants and received those and that, so we put that in there. I think technically, if we haven't really, we may want to do stuff, but if we don't have a final commitment yet, could be wrong on that.
Yeah.
It may not show up yet. You know what I mean? Like, maybe you're in the works of applying, but you haven't gotten something yet, so that wouldn't necessarily show up. I'm, my understanding is that this piece is our local commitment that we've said we would match twenty percent to get, you know, whatever grant we needed, and that, that is mostly buses if we look into the future.
Yeah, so I think what you're thinking of, Chuck, is when we look at the capital plan.
Yeah.
It is much higher than that. But in theory, the reason this is on here is once we apply for a grant and we certify that we have the local match, it's sort of locked in. The things on the capital plan might not have a grant and aren't necessarily locked in. So if the board said, we don't want to do any of that stuff, we don't want to do anything in the capital plan, there's nothing that says you couldn't make that decision. But we would have to violate grant agreements to get out of them if we wanted to back out of these dollars.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, if we can move to the next slide, I'm almost, I'm almost done. And this just kind of shows for the grants, this summarizes what Andrea does in the capital plan review. Basically, anything prior to two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-three, those, those usually in your capital. Those are things other than obviously the buses. That's all your encompassing things that you know that you're in the process of working on. Those are going to show more with other things. Obviously, two thousand and twenty-three now has the headquarters piece in it. That's why it's so much higher. And those numbers are going to change going forward in the future for the grants. And as we commit to those, those will also get added on. But it kind of breaks out and kind of shows you with the federal, the state, and the local. The majority of our, our grants are federal and local. Okay, and then on S T S, this is just through February. Again, nothing wholeheartedly standing out. I do know the fares were increased on this particular item, and that was put into place, I believe. Was that just recent? Late February. So in the future, we should be seeing those increase a little bit on the revenue side. So if we can turn to the next one, just gives you a little bit more detail on the revenue and the expense or the fares and wages and benefits, obviously. And then, of course, you know, we have fixed costs, so those would be in there whether we were operating or not. So. And I think that's it. That's conclusion.
Any questions or comments for Lisa? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the February twenty twenty-three operating and S T S financial statements subject to audit and capital plan review?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. P, Miss Pismo, seconded by Mr. Zibble. Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Epic.
Yes.
McTomey. Nunley.
Yes.
Pismo.
Yes.
Sheets. Stanger.
Yes.
Zibble.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. At this time, I'll turn the meeting over to Ben to talk about the organizational chart.
All right, this item is to update our org chart to include Geogre. I know this is a little hard to read, so I did put, I actually had Trudy put an eleven by seventeen copy of it at your spot. Might just be a little easier to see. We color coded the positions with the intent of, you know, trying to make it clear. There are thirty-four Geogre positions on here that would be added, all funded by Geogre. It is a couple more bus driver positions than they have today. They would be filled based on their ability to pay for them. But we expect, as we bring in more revenue for Medicaid contracts and stuff, be able to hire a couple more drivers. So there's no changes to the blue or to the quote-unquote Lake Tran positions. This is only to deal with Geogre. Most of it stayed very similar to what they already have. One of the major differences is we moved through a lot of conversation, the mechanic to report to Keith and his group versus Geogre Transit. We think we'll be able to support him better through Keith's management department. He'll still work out of Geogre County, but he'll report to Keith and abide by all the standards that our maintenance department has versus sort of the standard. Geogre doesn't have as many standards, just not as sophisticated, so it'll make him, it'll give him a better support network. But other than that, you know, this has been reviewed by Joanna from Geogre Transit. Some of the titles are slightly adjusted, but the other thing to keep in mind is over time, our plan is still to, you know, reduce some of those overhead positions. We're obligated to bring them over in the contract, but, you know, we have talked a lot about over time cutting those. So it will likely be times we come back to you to revise this to hopefully reduce the number of positions. This should be generally the highest you see going forward.
How many employees does this actually encompass?
This would add thirty-four positions to our organizational chart.
Of how many?
Our current organizational chart has two hundred and seventy-three, so this would add thirty-four to two seventy-three.
Thank you.
And what's a service worker? I see on the chart, it says Geogre's service worker. What is that?
Yeah, that's a, a job that is unique to them. We don't have a comparable position. It is essentially a half a janitor and half a bus cleaner. So our positions are segregated because there's enough work, but that person, some days they mow the lawn in the morning and they wash the buses at night.
Got it.
Any questions for Ben? Is there a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh oh nine authorizing the chief executive officer to revise and update Lake Tran's table of organization pursuant to Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash oh oh five and relative to the inter-agency transit service agreement with Geogre County Board of Commissioners and Geogre Transit?
So moved.
Motion made by Miss McTomey. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Miss Pismo. Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Epic.
Yes.
Nunley.
Yes.
McTomey.
Yes.
Pismo.
Yes.
Sheets. Stanger.
Yes.
Zibble.
Yes.
Thank you. Again, I will turn the meeting over to Ben to talk about a new vehicle purchase.
Uh, yeah, this is very similar to the last time we bought a replacement utility vehicle. Lake Tran has utility vehicles that do all kinds of different things. Certain staff take them to meetings. They get used for driver relief. General staff purposes. If a road supervisor's vehicle has a problem, it gets used as a spare. We always double check to make sure the type of vehicle we're thinking about buying makes sense. We have been moving to a mostly Ford fleet, mainly because most of the buses are Ford. And as we build, you know, a consistent working relationship with one dealer for the bus maintenance, it does make it easier to toss other vehicles in there versus taking them all over the place. So we also already have some Fords in the fleet, and it means we have to buy less diagnostic tools. And so keeping them all the same reduced costs overall. So when we looked at this vehicle, a Ford Escape is what we have been buying. We think that's probably still a good vehicle to purchase for this service. Just a reminder, in the past, normally what we would do is we would identify a vehicle down to the VIN number, get a specific price, and bring the board. Just a reminder, in the past, normally what we would do is we would identify a vehicle down to the VIN number, get a specific price and bring the board that exact price for that exact vehicle. Dealers just don't do that anymore, they won't hold the vehicle long enough for us to go through that process. So now we've asked the board for a certain amount of authority to buy the vehicle and kind of strike when we can get the best deal. So, um, that's, we've done that now, this is I think the third vehicle we've done that with. And so the process has worked out well, uh, we, we come in below the maximum number every time, I think the last one was about three thousand dollars. Roughly underneath the, uh, amount we asked for. So that's our plan here, um, the vehicle we're replacing is a two thousand thirteen Chevy Impala. And it is just, you know, it's at the end of its life, it just doesn't, uh, financially make sense to keep around anymore, so, um. And we try to do about one a year, so we're on schedule to keep doing about one vehicle a year, so. It is funded by, uh, federal grant dollars, so eighty percent of it is federal, twenty percent of it is local. If it was the full price, which it'll, it'll be under that, it would be thirty thousand in federal and seventy-five hundred in, uh, local dollar.
How many vehicles was this?
One.
One.
Yeah, we try to keep them spread out, so we're not having to buy big blocks of vehicles and have high expenses one year, we try to just buy one at a time, fund them with grant dollars. The only vehicle that doesn't work out too well in is the road supervisors' vehicles, those get bought in a big block. But they also have a bunch of special equipment that gets put on, so it's easier to buy them in a block and then you get a contractor to just outfit all four of them at once. But other than that, this is just a standard off-the-shelf Ford Explorer.
Just answered my next question.
I'm not sorry, I said Ford Explorer, I meant Ford Escape, excuse me.
That is state contract not valid anymore, is it?
You have to wait a really long time, um, and usually what we do is try to get the dealer to match the state contract price. That used to be really easy, it's not easy anymore, it's just generally hard to get vehicles right now. So the last one we bought, they would not match state contract price, I think it was like five hundred dollars more, but state contract was like a seventeen-month wait, so. Yeah.
It's all getting tougher.
Hopefully it starts to get easier over time. It still just feels a little silly, you know, uh, today, uh, but. Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or comments for Ben? Is there a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh one oh, authorizing the CEO or his designated to purchase a replacement utility vehicle at a cost not to exceed thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Zibble, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Stanger, Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Epic.
Yes.
McNamee.
Yes.
Nunley.
Yes.
He's mo-.
Yes.
Sheets. Stanger.
Yes.
Zibble.
Yes.
Okay, I'll turn the meeting over to Ben for a combined six-month look ahead and CEO report.
Thank you, Mr. President. This, uh, month should be, I, I think this is the first month of the revised format of the six-month look ahead. We, we re-formatted it to try and, um, put some of the information the board commonly asks for, uh, in an easy-to-find place. So we, we, especially the budget, we tried to outline that budget or the cost estimate, we tried to bring that out separately. And then kind of just go over everything, so. In May, we have the AWT passenger shelter, um, we do have an official engineer's estimate and now it's a little lower than we originally anticipated. It is out to bid, uh, right now, the, the estimate is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, hopefully it comes in below that. The Geogre kind of transit budget will come before the board, uh, for approval in May, we're going to try and get that to you as soon as we can, so you can see it. But it's still really a placeholder budget for only part of the year. In June, we'll have our federal grant authority, it's a routine item where we ask for the authority to buy, uh, grant or to purchase, uh, or man, to apply for federal grants. We also have the Lake Erie College Passenger Shelters, um, this actually has changed. The engineer's estimate came in and, uh, it, it's quite a bit lower than the original estimate we had in here, it'll be about a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, so. It's come down quite a bit, we just got that, uh, Friday. Replacement diloride buses is also in June, which would be eight diloride of our standard propane bus, this is the bus that, uh, we have forty-six-ish of them, forty, something in that number, forty-eight. That the customers generally like, um, it's not the one that people have complained about before. We'll have an updated public transit safety plan in June, we'll also have an updated Title VI plan, those are both as a result of the Geogre County Transit Project. We originally had the EO plan on right now, we actually are getting word from FTA that we may not have to update that, so, um, to be determined, but that item may actually end up coming off. Just a reminder that we have recess in July. Bus advertising is, we'll go out to bid and come to the board in August, we do this every three to five years, um, this is our advertising on the buses. We have, I have the cost estimate that says plus seventy-five, we receive about seventy-five thousand dollars in revenue annually. We expect that number to go up a little bit with Geogre, uh, transit involved. And then snow plowing, uh, pretty standard, every three to five years we go out to bid for snow plowing, uh, this will include Geogre. August, um, I won't go over this whole thing again, but generally this is to purchase non-accessible vans, these would be minivans. There's a lot of other things kind of going on with this, uh, project specifically to try and do it a little bit cheaper on the technology side, but, um. I know one of the, the kind of ironic things is for a Buy America vehicle, they'll probably be Honda minivans. I know that topic can come up from time to time, is why does Lake Train have foreign vehicles? It is because they are actually the most made in, uh, the US. For September, we'll have the audit, uh, to review. For those of you that have been through the audit process before, the auditor will likely send you an individual email with the option to join a conference call with them, uh, to hear the information direct from them. Versus just the presentation from us, so when that happens, we'll get that out to everybody like we have before. Any questions on the next six months?
For the snow plowing, snow plowing, a couple of slides back, uh, it didn't have a budget estimate, is that, is there a reason for that?
Yeah, I, when we put this together, I was not, I did not have all of our current contracts added up, so that will be in probably next month. But we do have, um, what our current expenditures are, they just, I didn't get a chance to add them up and put them in the slideshow, so you'll get that soon. We don't expect it to change much more currently. It's a good question. Any other questions? See, so, okay. All right, I will go quick into the, uh, CEO report. So I wasn't exactly sure how the board was going to want to see HQ updates on a monthly basis, um, I can put in some pictures if you'd like. We are, uh, going to be putting, uh, pictures on our website regularly, so there'll also be a place for the board to look at them there. The project trailer was delivered the week of April third, uh, all the landscaping in the project area was removed. We restripped a lot of the parking area, as you probably saw when you parked in your visitor's space today. And then the real, uh, heavy excavation and storm sewer work began on the eighteenth, so, um, they are hard at work, uh, some of the holes they have dug are very deep. But we'll be taking pictures and posting them on our website to the best of our ability to keep the board and just the general public informed, it's a, it's an open website, so anybody can look at it to see kind of what we're doing. We also have a construction camera that we used at, uh, Wickliffe, that we'll be putting up on the building, that you can actually have a live feed of, of the construction site, you'll be able to go to our website and click on it and see the contractors in sort of real time. So, um, off to a good start. Sure.
Yeah, um, can we get that, can we get that website like sent to us or away for us to access that more easily than having to type it in, like, can we send, get it sent in a email link or something?
Yeah, sure, we'll send that out after the meeting, if you do, if you want it before that, if you click about Lake Tran, there is, at the top of that section, there's a construction project button. And you can hit that also, but we will happily send the link out to everybody.
Thank you.
So, uh, Geogre County schedule, we continue to be on schedule. We have the org chart on today, which we've already done, um, next month we have the budget and then June we have those three items could be reduced to two, so everything is moving smoothly. We're having bi-weekly meetings with them just to talk through all the details, um, and they're pretty good, uh, we've had a lot of success. Our HR folks are going to be down there tomorrow, talking to the employees about the hiring process and, and, and onboarding and everything, so. We are, uh, right on schedule, working through all kind of all the little details. Strategic plan, so we, uh, decided not to move forward with the plan at the moment, but to talk about projects individually, so next month. I plan to bring, uh, some projects to the board to just discuss and see which ones, um, you think might be a good idea. I think we probably have the ability to, to do one, to add one project to our, our planning and budgeting for next year. So I'll bring kind of a list of those projects with a description of them to give the board an idea of what that actually entails. Um, and see if there's one the board is really interested in, and then we can, you know, get you some more information, some budgeting and, and kind of just general, um, information about what those, uh, options are. Um, and just have a little conversation about those items I put up on the screen last month. If there's something else the board's really interested in, let me know, I'll be happy to, uh, present it. The ISD strategic plan is moving along well, um, they have completed the gathering of data phase and they've moved into gap analysis. I, they are still scheduled to be completed with the plan in June. I don't know if they'll be done in time for the June board meeting, so they may present in the June board meeting, they may present in the August board meeting. Not quite sure yet, which is why you don't see it on the six-month look ahead, but I would expect either June or, or August to be a presentation from the IT strategic plan consultants. The grant tracker, we have, uh, uh, one new grant, uh, including the weird grant that I talked about before. Which was the Vine Street Corridor Improvement Grants that just sort of appeared, um, from nowhere from Noaca. The other one we did apply for at ODOT, which would be, uh, Geogre Transit Pro- Propane Vehicle Placements. Uh, that would be a grant through ODOT, ODOT has committed to use what they call toll development credits, which are revenue credits that they get from the, uh, toll road as the local match. So the vehicles would be one hundred percent funded by ODOT for Geogre Transit and the application was for six buses. So we'll see if they are awarded on there, buses are in pretty rough shape, so we hope that they'll be awarded, uh, funds. Plus with all of our propane experience, we view it as a pretty strong application, because they have, you know, it's not, it might be a new propane bus to them, but we have forty-eight of them and we have a lot of experience, so we hope that they'll be awarded those vehicles. Those are only eligible to rural transit agencies, which is why you don't see an application from Lake Train in there. Um, service quality, oops, sorry, sure.
On the, um, the TLC contractor, do you have an extra copy of the, uh, final report that was submitted probably for that grant?
For the, the Vine Street Corridor?
Yeah.
Do we have the final report yet?
We still have a draft final report, um, Noaca has asked for a few additional changes that the consultant is working on, but I can still send you the.
Do you have an extra copy of it though?
Uh, it's electronic, so yeah.
Electronic?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
We can print.
She sent it to me though, but I, I hate reading, I hate reading on the screen.
We can print one out, but yeah, that, that was part of why getting the grant money was interesting, is the, the, Noaca asked for some additions to the final report. And then sent us grant money for it, so it's very, it's just very weird, it's very weird. But we can send the report out to the whole board once we get a, a final report or the draft report, we can put it in.
Don't print it out, it, I imagine it's pretty.
It, it is, and the appendix is like two hundred pages, would you like that as well, it's got all the cost estimating.
No, I just want to see, I just want to really see the pretty pictures.
Okay, yeah.
Service quality, extended service, so service quality has continued to be good, um, I'm very happy to say as our ridership monitoring has taken place. Performance is good, even in March, which is our toughest month. Ridership didn't go up a lot this March compared to last month, it did go up and only went, uh, up, uh, point nine percent. Local route ridership, however, for this month compared to last year went up sixteen point nine percent, so local route ridership went up a lot. That's a really good thing, seeing local route ridership go up really high is great, because it doesn't cost us any extra money. It's just more people transported for the same expense, so that's, that's fantastic information. Denials have continued to stay below average, which is good, so even though ridership, this is another, we went up between March and, or February and March of eleven point seven percent. Denial stayed below average, so it's a lot of different metrics to compare together, but the, the main story is. Ridership went up from last month in February and denials went down, so this is the denials chart. So normally we expect about two hundred, so this just shows us that all that hiring and all that effort we put in has paid off. And while people still reference, you know, sort of when it was bad, uh, a little while ago, that is not the case for service quality today, service quality is actually very good. Denial rates are lower than they have been in a long time, so I'm very happy to say we are rolling extended service out because of that. Which should roll out, um, towards the end of May, so we are in a good spot, so. You know, every once in a while, someone says to me, what happened to, to dial a ride, and I tell them, yeah, it had a rough spot, but it is fixed. You know, denials are way below average, service quality is good right now, we are keeping a very close eye on it, it is one of the priorities I give Matt every day, is making sure that service quality remains good. Um, and I'm very happy to say that it is, and you can look back, you know, denials are lower than they've been on average for several years, so that is, that is a definite positive. Unless there are any other questions, that, uh, concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Ben. Uh, let's move to the old business section and, uh, everyone should know, last month, there was an optional work session for the rules and regulations. I was unable to be there, Mr. Zibble led the meeting, so I'd like to turn it over to him at this time.
Thank you, Brian, um, yes, we did have a special meeting last week, Tuesday, which, um, minutes were approved here today. There was five board members there and I, I think we had a pretty good discussion going on regarding the things. I was a little disappointed in my organization of the meeting, because it seemed, we seemed to jump around quite a bit, so I don't think we accomplished all the things that we really thought we could accomplish. In that discussion, but again, I think it was very, very helpful to have that, that conversation. One of the big things was, and unfortunately, Mr. Dines was not able to be there too, we had a couple of legal questions that came up, so those were communicated to Mr. Dines after the meeting. And he will be having some time to do some research on those in the near future and be able to get back to us on, on those. What I would suggest going forward for these rules and regulations is that, that maybe we set up one or two more. Special meetings, non, non-mandatory night meetings to discuss the, uh, the couple of the topics that were in there. For those of you that were not at the meeting on Tuesday, uh, I had shared a document that gave my comments and thoughts on what each of the changes were about. And the three that are highlighted in there, uh, I thought needed a lot of discussion between the board members as to what we wanted to do with those. So my thought would be that the first discussion meeting would be to talk about those three items, one being, uh, any kind of disciplinary action that we wanted to, to understand. Uh, we wanted to proceed if a board member was not performing up to some standards that we were establishing. The second one was the spending limitation for, um, the CEO without having board approval, currently it's at twenty-five thousand dollars. Ohio revised code would allow a hundred thousand dollars if we wanted to go that high, so again, there's a lot of discussion in my mind that we need to do there to, to come to a comfortable level for everybody. And then also, Mr. Dines has suggested an indemnification clauses in the, um, in the bylaws, so we can talk about those and make sure that everybody's on board with those. The rest of the items, in my mind, are not as critical as those three items, a lot of it was just changing some of the names. Uh, from general, general manager to CEO and eliminating the secretary treasurer in a couple of spots, so. They would, um, not be, uh, it's in my mind needing a whole lot of more conversation than what maybe we already had, or you, you just reading them, you would say, yeah, let's go ahead with those. So again, I would make the suggestion, Brian, that we have a, schedule a couple more meetings. Uh, my preference would be that people would offer some type of written comments before the meeting, so that those can be organized into the discussions. So that we could focus on each item separately and completely as best we can. So we're not jumping around as much as we did in the last meeting, yeah, so, uh, that'd be what I would suggest and we'll go see where we want to go from there.
I think that sounds good, I think it makes sense to set, um, a couple meetings up and make them optional going forward, so we can keep the project advancing.
Okay.
When I keep forgetting to turn this on, well, my question is, is it possible, rather than, it seemed to me like the date was just chosen for this meeting. To do something where we can make a determination of, um, what date works for most people, try to get more people in on this discussion?
Uh, well, we chose the date, um, I circulated an email to Ben and Brandon, because their schedules are the busiest and sometimes we just have to pick a date, trying to get nine people's calendars plus Ben and Brandon's to line up. That's not always possible, and I think I would like to keep the meeting optional, because there are some folks that just don't have an interest in. That's not always possible, and I think I would like to keep the meeting optional, because there are some folks that just don't have an interest in. Rules and regulations, and there's others that do, um, but we'll try to pick a date that's a little bit further out to give more people. Um, a chance to adjust their schedule.
I wasn't suggesting that we, um, not keep it optional, I was just trying to involve the people who are interested. I wanna weigh in on this, that they could be there.
Sure, and we'll try to pick a date a little further out to hope that that could alleviate, um, some scheduling. Uh, were there any other comments or questions on the rules or regulations at this time? Okay, not seeing any, um, is there any, uh, so Chuck, uh, one more question, let me ask, so is there, um. So right now, just to understand, uh, set a future meeting or two, um, and then some balls are in, um, Brandon's court to do some. Research, are those kind of the deliverables between the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, and did you have anything to add, Mr. Dines?
I do not, thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh, any other old business? Seeing none, is there any new business in the room? Also seeing none, at this time, is there a motion to adjourn today's, uh, trustees meeting?
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. McNamee, is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Nunley, Trudely, Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Epic.
Yes.
McNamee. Nunley.
Yes.
Isma.
Yes.
Sheets. Stanger.
Yes.
Zibble.
Yes.
All right, thank you, everyone, we are adjourned.